Are you guys ready? Meeting is called to order.
There. Okay, this meeting is called to order. Can I read the roll call, please?
Mr. Benner?
Here.
Mr. Cullinan?
Here.
Mr. First?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. Zollers?
I'm here. Are there any changes or corrections to the previous minute meeting minutes? Okay, I have none, those will stand as approved. Anything on the agenda that we need to know about other than what it is? Okay, that too will stand. New public speakers? All right. Okay, then Emily, let's go ahead and get into it.
All right, sounds great. So this evening, we are having a work session to discuss a group of zoning code amendments, as well as a couple of zoning map changes. This is, as we've discussed previously, we're looking at this as kind of a working document. Probably every six months or so, we'll probably take a look at the code and see what needs updating, what's not really working. And so with that, we've kind of been working with, you know, a working group to come up with some of these changes. And so this evening, we were hoping to just kind of high-level overview of some of those. And then July 22nd will actually be the Special Planning Commission meeting. That will be the public hearing for these changes. First read was at council on Monday of this week. So with that, I can just go through kind of, one by one, kind of what we're looking at as far as some of those changes. And then along the way, if we want to just have discussion, we can do that. And then at the end, if there are any questions, suggestions, et cetera, we can go through those.
Are the changes, proposed changes in red? Or are they, is this, all 40 pages changes?
So what you have up on your screen, so I think a couple of us were doing these. My changes are going to be in, attract changes in blue. I'm not sure about some of the others.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so I'll kind of try to, as I'm scrolling through, I'll kind of try to highlight some of those. But, all right. So first up, so we took a look at defining medical marijuana in our code a little bit more distinctly, as it wasn't really addressed previously. That's something that's going to start coming up more and more with the state issuing more and more licensing for medical marijuana facilities. So we sat down and defined the different use types. So this would include the dispensaries, the processing, grow operations, and then kind of figured out which districts we wanted those to be in. I think we agreed to do a conditional use in those districts. And then business regulation ordinance. Not sure what that one is. So was there any questions or comments about that?
What was, Ms. Wheeler, what was the conclusion on the types of uses? There was multiple medical marijuana we had discussed in the workshop session in regards to either like retail distribution and potentially some sort of processing. What were the final changes in this in regards to what districts those two uses were going to be permitted in?
Yes, I think the, let me see if we have the, I think it's actually toward the end of this document here. So these are the new definitions. There's the cultivation, the dispensary, and then the processing. So I believe the dispensary was going to be conditional in most of our commercial districts. That would include community commercial and the in-site districts. I believe that was innovation as well. And then cultivation and processing, those were both conditional in innovation. I think, was there any? Can't remember if we talked about doing them. I can't remember for the in-site districts, if we talked about doing that as a conditional as well.
If I remember correctly, sorry, this is Mr. First. I believe it was conditional in all cases.
Any other questions on the, or discussion on this matter?
Did the attorney have a thought or two?
I'm still not sure I understand exactly what we're doing. I mean...
Let me try and clarify real quick. And just, can I, can I have you heard on this? Okay. So try to give a comprehensive overview of the medical marijuana issue. First and foremost, we created the three uses and the definitions that you see for dispensary, processing, and cultivation. The second thing we did was identify where those uses will be allowed in the city. Those are limited to your commercial districts. Dispensary is going to be a conditional use in almost every one of your commercial districts. And processing is going to be a conditional use in your innovation district. And I believe we also put cultivation as a conditional in innovation. Is that correct? Okay, so... Correct. So innovation would have as a conditional use. Cultivation, processing, and dispensary in all other commercial districts in the city, including the in-site districts. Only dispensary is a conditional use, not the other medical marijuana uses. In addition, we did add, we added requirements for the granting of a conditional use application for a medical marijuana facility into our supplementary conditions. That's under section 1105.13. Those conditions are that it can't be located so close to another medical marijuana facility, so close to some of our sensitive uses like public parks and schools and residential districts, and that the interior activities or operations of the facility have to be screened from public right-of-way view, except for administrative tasks. So receptionists and things of that nature.
Any questions on this subject? Okay, Emily?
All right. Next change, we talked about, I guess, clarifying the credit given for green space. This has come up with some of our bigger developments. We kind of talked about whether or not to include detention basins. And I believe the decision, I'm going to get to that. I believe the decision on that was to include that as a green space if it is essentially structured as an amenity for the residents.
Excuse me, Emily, could you do, raise the font on that a little bit?
Oh.
Yeah, we can't read it.
There we go. You're welcome.
Okay.
So Ms. Wheeler, we have, you're going to the section. But I think one of the discussions we had in the workshop session was whether you count the stormwater basin, something that's required, you know, for the EPA to filter stormwater as green space or as a credit in regards to green space. And part of the concept that we talked about was there are situations where developers can utilize a storm basin as an amenity to the project and sort of activate that space by having things around it. You know, we don't want to see somebody getting credit for doing something that they're required by code to do anyway. And it's just in the back half of the project, and you never see it, and it's just overgrown or whatever. So if we got the language correct in this, I mean, that was the intent, is to, you know, allow a credit for it if it's being used in some sort of creative way that actually is useful to the residents or the neighborhood or the community. So I'm hoping that's what we ended up with here in the final, or in this draft version.
Let me interject here real quick. Emily, listen, it might be easier for us to not do as much speed reading. So why don't we start at page one and go down through all these and just do the changes? That way, we can keep on track.
Yeah, and I apologize, the, this list that I think we had used for kind of a...
Okay, well, let's just start at page one and go down through. And listen, page one, and whatever's blue, we'll talk about. Whatever's not, you know, black, we'll just leave, or whatever the case may be.
Yep, that sounds good. All right. So in the accessory structures section here...
We still need the font, though.
Yeah, we...
Thank you.
Went ahead and added a provision that essentially open-sided accessory structures, for example, pergolas would be permitted in a front side yard in commercial districts. For those of you familiar with what, oh gosh, not Tempe, next to Tempe.
Prost.
Prost, sorry. Has done something similar to that. The way accessory structures are traditionally viewed is we don't allow them in a front yard. We thought this was appropriate in commercial districts to allow structures like that.
Any discussion on that matter? Okay.
This was a provision actually pretty much pulled over from our old code. Somehow, this just didn't get carried over. This is addressing portable temporary storage units. A lot of people will get these when they're moving in or out or doing construction projects on the house. And this, this language is essentially just saying they can have them on the property, on a hard-paved surface. I believe it's for a period, they don't need to get a permit unless it's for more than seven days. And then total should not exceed 14 days. Unless there is an open building permit, then they would be allowed to have one out so long as the building permit is still open. And again, this language was more or less a replica of what we had previously.
Any concern about this one? Okay.
We looked at the small format grocery definition. Previously, it had defined small format as being at least 5,000 square feet. We amended that to 500 square feet. Also a provision about the requirement that there be the sale of fresh produce within 10% of that facility. So that's just kind of amending the existing definition to capture some of those grocery stores that were less than the 5,000 square feet.
I have a question on that. 500 square feet is tiny. I mean, thousands, you know, most buildings are, spaces are 11, maybe 1,000, 1,200 square feet. Where are you going to find, why 500? That's a very small space.
Yeah, we can certainly change that. That was somewhat arbitrary.
Mr. Hicks, I mean, or Ms. Cullinan, I mean, 500 square feet for a grocery store is...
Yeah, no, like most of the multi-tenant retail we do, that's just a small, like, size of a cellphone place or a small mattress place or something like that, that's going to be 1,000, 1,500.
Yeah, I think that was the, I think the way it was written before didn't really make sense. We were trying to find a small, like, 5,000 square feet, I don't think is a small format grocery store. That's a, that's a fairly large.
It seems like, this is trying to make a minimum where this part's activated, right?
Right.
Because it's as large as at least 25,000. So could small just be anything less than that?
There's a medium as well.
Mr. Shook?
Or is there a medium?
Do we need to put a magic square foot in this?
Please hold still. You're about to give me...
Do we, do we need, do we need to put a magic square feet in?
I mean, 500 square, you know, it's small.
I mean, that's up to you guys. That's what I would say. As far as a need, that is up to the policymakers.
So I think the reason why it's in there is because we do have a definition for it. And I think the, when they were reviewing the code, the thought was, 5,000 is not really small. And that is an allowable use in some of the districts in the city. And so we're just trying to make sure that we weren't writing a requirement for a size that really wasn't a small format. You know, if the intention was to have, I don't think it's, you know, I doubt we're going to have like a bodega-style grocery store in February in Ohio. But, you know, if someone wanted to have a small, something smaller than all these, let's say, especially in an older building in Old Reynoldsburg, I think it was trying to enable that.
Yeah, if somebody had a 4,000-square-foot grocery, technically, they wouldn't qualify for the small format grocery, right? So if it's 500, then they would. So if that's lower, I don't, I don't think a 750-square-foot grocery is ever going to like give us heartburn about something like this. That's kind of what the intention is.
Okay.
So I think the 500's fine, it's probably maybe lower than it really needs to be. But, I mean, if it's 1,000, you got a 900-square-foot space, you know.
All right, that's fine, that's one that's here with the logic. Okay. Any other, any other questions on that? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Emily.
This is just reflecting that same change within Old Reynoldsburg, Old Reynoldsburg Commercial District. Changing that, I'm sorry, we also changed that to conditional. That was...
Wasn't permitted previously?
Yeah, it was, it says P, so it was permitted before, now it's conditional. So get to look.
Any comments on that? Okay, next up, we looked at solar panels. We had a requirement in there that zoning certificates would be required for, even for roof-mounted solar. And we've been getting quite a few of these recently. These always will go to our, our building department for building permits as well. So we just kind of felt like the zoning certificate was not super necessary for the roof-mounted specifically. For the freestanding solar arrays, we kept that in there and kind of still treating that as an accessory structure. And that's really the only change there, just not requiring the zoning certificate for the, for the roof-mounted solar.
Okay, good.
In Old Reynoldsburg Neighborhood District, we made office professional services conditional. This was in part to reflect the, I think it's the Blacklight Office Park Plaza there. Just didn't want to create non-conforming uses there, so we added that one in. Residential medium, I believe the change here was adding building height transition. I know there was some discussion about this. So the code currently has essentially the same language within the in-site districts. Essentially, what we did was remove that language from the in-site districts and put it in the residential medium section. There was also a provision about, and I will make this larger, I'm sorry. There was a provision about 120%, that was up to 150%. This is essentially a provision regulating height transition when you have, you know, newer multi-story buildings being developed next to single-story suburban residential districts.
I think my only comment on this was when we were talking about this conceptually before, that the 100, well, the 120% was prior, 150% that it would prob, I would assume it would be more appropriate to be around 200% because hypothetically, you're looking at, even the example here, two buildings of 24 feet on each side and a new vertical building in the middle being 28. You know, that's not the difference. You know, things are typically built in stories, a one-story, a two-story, you know, three-story, et cetera. So I think it would be appropriate to have, you know, one-story buildings, to have a two-story building in the middle of it, not a one-and-a-half-story building. I don't think that's outside, you know, or in two-story buildings and then a three-story building or something. You know, after that, I think the sensitivity kind of goes down the difference between, you know, a two and a three versus a one versus a two. So my only comment would be, I think we just need to adjust that percentage in order to accommodate a two-story, a full two-story building being next to a one-story.
That's a good point, I agree with that.
Could we speak of it in stories instead of percentages? Is there any objection to that? That seems to be a little more, I mean, I realize that there's a little bit of ambiguity there, but that would resolve the matter pretty clearly, I would think.
Not, or like, none more than half, again, you know, what would that be? None more than half of existing.
I think the only thing with the, if you break it down by story, is that some, I mean, I've seen some one-story ranch homes that just have a ridiculous amount of attic space and are the size of a two-story building. And that, really trying to get into technicality, a first story can be 20 feet tall if you don't, plus roof or whatever. So I don't, I guess I don't mind the percentages, but I just think that it needs to be something that would relate to a one-story, a typical two-story house next to a one-story house like in...
Brookside.
Brookside or at Huber, where there are some two-story homes and right next to ranches, you know.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't really have a problem with it being 200. I was just spitballing for ideas, see if we could add some clarity. But if we wanted to change it to 200, that works for me.
Just, just one quick correction on here. In the, I was told there would be no math category. Under section B3, under the 150% example, it wouldn't be 24 feet and 28.8 feet. It would be 24 feet and 32 feet. Under a 200% example, it would be 24 feet and 48 feet. So that's a, that's a typo on there.
I do think it's necessary that, especially Huber. Huber has some two-story homes, but they also have some ranch homes that have renovated with, by adding a second story. I know in Brookside, depending on the pitch of the roof, your total height is much different, even though there are basically 1,000-square-foot ranches on a slab. Everyone should have the right, I suppose, if they want to remodel one of those homes and make it a two-story home. However we accommodate that, I, I wasn't involved in these, I don't know. But if you can do a percentage, if you can do just simply two-story, is that too ambiguous to...
You know how much I dislike ambiguity.
That's why I ask you.
I think one of the things we were trying to avoid is there's a particular situation in the Huber neighborhood where you have, it's surrounded by one-story houses, and you have not, not a one-and-a-half, not a two. You got a two-and-a-half, almost looking like going on three type situation right next in the backyard of another unit. So trying to avoid this situation.
Well, if we had an engineer or someone that knew math, they could probably give us the percentage that we should plug in there.
Well, I, I think if it is, if it is really double the, double the height, you know, I...
No, because you have the story height, and then you have the portion of the joist in the roof.
Right, right, right. So the, no, and I realize that, you know, if it's a two-story building that allows you to put four there, and, you know. I mean, could we make it as simple as adding no more than an additional story?
Yeah, no more than. Why don't we change that to no more than double existing, or pick a phrase?
Well, I mean, if we really wanted to transition, and we wanted to have, if we think the transit, transition zone should basically be one story, then, then why don't we just say, you know, that buildings that would be subject to this can be no taller than one additional story. And, and we could, we could let the, you know, I guess, you know, the building department fight that out if they're trying to put in 20-foot ceilings in the second story as well.
Real quick, because I know the Huber issue has come up. We do have another section we're going to discuss as we go later on down the line about a Huber overlay district. This section here is really for the residential medium district, so an attached multifamily building being built next to a single-family residential area. So we'll get into the Huber stuff when we get to the Huber overlay district.
Okay, so, so going, I guess going back to then, if this is just for residential medium, you know, does this seem to work then?
I'd also point out, this, this does apply when the structures are within 40 feet. The structures, not the parcel line. So if you think about it from that standpoint, I mean...
Probably not going to apply in a whole lot of situations.
Correct.
Well, I mean, we need to fix the math that's in it right now, as our attorney pointed out.
And it's my mistake, so.
Okay, well, let's, can we make that correction? And then is everyone fine with that math being corrected and moving on to the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that then, Emily, please.
This was really more just a typo. This was the community commercial zone. This has come up a few times. We had, I think, just those kind of intermix there. The lot width minimum should be 80. No lot width max. Some of the typologies were updated as well. Again, I think these were just kind of typos. We had detached single-family and community commercial. That was intended to be there. This was taking that building height transition out of the in-site districts. This is an update actually to the major site plan, some middle requirements. This provision here is just stipulating that there be an engineer's staff report and in addition to the staff zoning report that will be conducted by the city engineer. And that, so that language would be added there.
And that, that's like the report like we saw last time, right?
Right, and that would be at the expense of the applicant as well. Yeah, I think, I know, I don't think Andrew track changed his changes, but that should be.
You can keep going.
Oh. Believe this was an update to the in-site design standards. Previously, it had, there was a requirement that the facade be Jordi glass. So this just updates that to a little more flexible with that material. Same thing, this was EMD and BMD there. So, sorry, this was the actual, the language for the credit for the previous, uh, common green space. Detention ponds are included if designed as an amenity and community feature.
Mr. Hicks, this is where you were talking about not giving credit for something that has to be done anyways.
Well, I mean, I think, uh, I think the spirit of this is in line with what we were talking about. I would just maybe add a little bit of detail about it being, uh, activated. I mean, uh, I don't think we necessarily, like the word fencing, I don't know if we necessarily want to encourage fencing around a basin and get them credit for that. I've, I've always kind of been in favor of using landscaping, uh, you know, bike, you know, multi-use trail, and I'm supposed to say bike trail, but multi-use paths or seating areas, adventures, exactly. You know, I mean, or make them, you know, more, they make, uh, you can do like wetland-type basins, which have to be managed properly to be able to be, you know, uh, to actually look nice. But when they are done nice, they look really nice. So I, I think we could add a little bit more flavor or detail in regards to that, uh, before we move this along.
I think with that too, you might want to add it to be part of like the planning commission's middle.
What that?
That, that way you can have comments, so, like you'll see like Westerville, for example, or places, some other places that, that's a bit for discussion, like, hey, if you want this to count for this.
I, I was just going to add, I, I think the way that the language states it is, that's up to our discretion about whether they get that, because it's, it's part of our major site plan review. Is that correct, Ms. Wheeler? Or did I just imagine that?
Yeah, that's what we discussed. I think we probably need to articulate that a little bit more clearly.
I think the way that it's currently phrased, and again, this kind of goes against my earlier comment about disliking ambiguity, is that the way that it's currently phrased, if you take out the examples like fencing, landscaping, and natural feel, it's already phrased in a way that gives a significant amount of discretion to planning commission.
I, okay. We good with that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just underscore that, like Mr. Hicks, I'm, I'm not particularly fond of, of stating specific things just because I feel like that's, some, some applicant is going to read that as, oh, well, we threw up a fence there, so it's good to go. And, and we should be able to evaluate it in a more holistic manner.
And we won't run into any issues because of the word-of-the-evening ambiguity?
It's, it's actually ambiguous by design to grant you guys that discretion when an application comes before you.
I think, I think, uh, the word fencing does, is, uh, if you read that, then they're going to automatically throw a fence on their plans.
Right.
So let's, I say-
Yeah, and I especially don't want them around the dry detention basins. I, I think that's a horrible aesthetic choice.
And that's even worse.
How about if we eliminate the word fencing, is everyone on board with that? Okay, can we do that, please? Okay, good, very good. Keep moving, Emily.
That was the same thing for the residential mediums, we'll update that as well. I think that's actually all. Uh, so as part of these changes, we do have three proposed map changes. Mr. First, I know is familiar, some of these from BZBA. We did have, um, two of these actually came out of, um, our most recent BZBA meeting. So the first would be eighty-three hundred, East Main Street. The proposal here is to rezone this from East Main Street District to Suburban Residential. That's this little piece right here. Sorry, I'll try to zoom in. So, we had an applicant that essentially was wanting to, uh, build a single-family detached home on this property. There was one, there was a single, uh, detached, single-family, uh, home here previously for many, many years. It is owned by the land, the Licking County Land Bank currently. So this applicant had submitted to us a rezoning application. We, we, I guess, made the call to include that with this round of zoning changes. It is up to, um, this body in city council whether to, uh, include that with the ultimate, um, you know, changes or not. But that is one of the map changes being proposed.
Where is this again, Emily?
Yeah, sorry, it's eighty-three hundred East Main Street.
It, it's a vacant lot.
This little piece right here, being shown as yellow, is currently vacant, correct?
Can you give any?
Yeah, to, well, to give some context, so, yeah, the, the BZBA application was, um, that they had originally submitted a, a variance request for it, and BZBA determined that, um, the magnitude of the change that they were requesting, that the use specifically was not really in keeping with the East Main Street District, that it really did need to be rezoned because they were asking for us to allow a detached, single-family home in a district that, that is not an allowable use. So we thought that was beyond the bounds of BZBA and, and something that was-
Is that just past Hanson?
I'm sorry?
Is that just past Hanson?
Yes.
So that, okay, that was the young lady who asked for the, okay, for the variance. I got you. Yeah, I don't know what else you could do with that property, other than build that house.
I, I think it's a challenging site either way.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So, um, so that's, so that's one parcel. The other one is, uh, this Oak Valley parcel, uh, right here.
Again, remind us from to, Emily?
So, this one's a little complicated. So, so, um, even with our old zoning code, this parcel was actually split half and half between, uh, East Main Street District and Suburban Residential. So you can see this whole piece right here is all part of that parcel. Um, this dark yellow is currently East Main Street District. So the proposal would be to, to rezon this half of the parcel to Suburban Residential, leaving the entire parcel zone Suburban Residential.
And to give some context for this too, uh, the applicant had asked, very similar, asked for a, a variance request. The, uh, many of the neighbors and the neighboring properties came out and, and spoke in, in favor of wanting there to be single-family homes there instead of a commercial or mixed type use, uh, which would have been allowable under the, the Main Street District.
That's right behind a funeral home.
It is.
What about flag lot?
Well, yeah, and that, that was the other thing too. It asked for flag lots, and I, at least me personally, I'm not a fan of those.
I'm not either, and if we make, do we have, if we change this, do we still have any recourse as far as the flag lot situation?
He would not be allowed to build flag lots, it would have to conform to the single family.
Well, he would still need a variance for the flag lots, correct? For the frontage for Suburban Residential.
No problem.
So it doesn't, but this was, this parcel, the existing parcel was like split between two zones. So we're just kind of fixing that error and picking one or the two, which to me it seems like-
Correct, this is just kind of cleaning up the parcel. The reason it was like that, uh, is a little complicated, but essentially the, those parcels used to front all onto Main Street. There was a lot, uh, split slash combination that happened, and the zoning was not updated in part because there was some, uh, contr- I, the intent was to rezone the entire parcel as commercial. And I believe there was opposition from some of the neighbors, and that is why it ended up being split half and half, and it just was never cleaned up, so.
So hard. Single-family residential seems appropriate.
Okay, good, acceptable.
Uh, the final piece, um, I, I cannot recall the address off the top of my head, I believe it's-
It's on Lancaster, isn't it?
Yeah, it's this first piece. Um, there's a veterinarians' office, uh, on the south side of the parcel currently. And the intent here would be to rezone from community commercial to, uh, I believe it was to rezone to innovation, actually.
I think that parcel's a single-family home that you were pointing at.
Sorry, I was on the total wrong.
There it is, right there.
Yeah, okay, so to rezone from community commercial to innovation. This whole parcel right here.
So why doesn't community commercial work for vets' office?
Uh, it does work for the vets' office. There is quite a bit of land to the north, um, so the concern is more about, uh, the vacant, uh, land to the north that theoretically could be split and developed as an alternative use.
You could then develop a lot, I mean, innovative district is probably one of our more lenient permissible districts. I mean, I'm just curious what the advantages are over the commercial.
I think it's trying to bring it, you know, because we do have innovation along Lancaster, a little further south. I think it's trying to bring it more in line with that. As, as it is right now with community commercial, it kind of just sits out there, and, and it really isn't like anything else. You know, there is no, it, even across the, the boundary there, there isn't any other commercial use or anything like that. This is really kind of one of those, you know, just in the middle of nowhere type zones. And so I think the thought of making innovation is at least brings it in line with like the Dyna Labs and, and things like that. So at least from along one road perspective, it would be similar.
There's a lot of, I mean, it's not far from Broad Street, and there's a lot of commercial up on Broad Street, so.
But, but it is surrounded entirely by residential.
Yeah, I mean, so should it, should it be zoned residential, and then if they, it'd be non-conforming at the moment, and then if they did anything else with it, it would just be rezoned then? I mean, that's what, you know what I mean, like, I don't, I guess I'm fine with it either being commercial or, um, residential. I don't know about innovation, just because I don't think it's, like, when I think of the innovation district, I'm thinking of larger parcels for, uh, employment center type uses. And I don't know if there's really much there for that.
The, the preference typically is to not create non-conforming uses, and I, I think a veterinary clinic would be a non-conforming use if we made this residential. Just, that's my spitball.
Did the, uh, I guess I'm just fine with what it was before a commercial.
So the, something to, something to keep in mind too is, um, you know, think about the, the worst bad actor for a commercial that could possibly go there if, for instance, the, uh, the vet was to retire. Would we be okay with that?
Yeah, it's right next to a residential area, what could go in there?
Right, uh, well, I mean, you could, I don't know.
As far as bad actor, well, it's, commercial, what could go?
Well, no, and, and I, that's always a subjective, you know, comment, right? But, you know, I, I always think of like the, the sorts of uses that, uh, is claimed that, you know, the only sort of commercial that we get, like, you know, would, would a dollar store be okay? You know, that sort of thing, like, that we're opening ourselves, it, community commercial is very permissive from a commercial standpoint. So is that okay? I'm not making a value judgment on that, I'm just saying that, that, that would be allowable if we did nothing. So that's just something to keep in mind.
What's the most obnoxious use we have in innovative? Because that's, that's kind of, right, so what's the most obnoxious use to be close to single-family for a community commercial versus most obnoxious use for innovation district to be in that same spot? I'm curious.
Well, but a- as, you know, a- as a population does grow, and, and there is a need for, for, you know, business income, you know, jobs and things like that, I think that, that seems to me to, to align a little better next to a residential district, uh, a zone that, that would be, you know, very much geared towards a job center and office or something like that. That would be a lot less disruptive, I would think, than a, you know, retail-type commercial use.
Perhaps a better question would be, what brought this up? That vet's been there since I've been here almost, and I, I'm not sure, is there a potential development that we want to change this for?
I, I think Mr. Bowser would have to answer that.
Well, then maybe we table this until Mr. Bowser's available to answer the question. Because I agree with Mr. Hicks, I don't, uh-
It gets tabled either way, it's just a work session, so.
I understand, but-
I need to commission a vote on it until the twenty-seventh.
We've been flying through, flying through these things.
What's the, what's the, again, what is the proposed?
Change?
Yeah, to innovative?
Yeah.
Innovation, I mean?
To innovation, yes, from community.
From community commercial to innovation?
Right there to the south, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think, I think if anything, it was just another one of those kind of cleanup sort of items. If I had to venture a guess, you know, is one of those, like the Oak Valley parcel, where this seems like this is maybe an oversight.
Right, but Oak Valley and, and eighty-three hundred were both brought before BZBA. I watched the meetings, I understood what was going on.
That's how they came to our, you know, our, our awareness, but the, that probably, uh, someone took another look. If I venture a guess.
Someone, okay.
Let me, let me elaborate just a little bit on this, and, and I know that this is really more of a policy question for you guys. You know, we took a holistic look at the map, especially after what we experienced with BZBA on those two other applications, to determine if we had any other zoning districts that might be out of place. There's no other community commercial along Lancaster Avenue, and you have innovation there already because you already had a vets' office there, um, and it was already a permitted use in innovation. It was felt that that was a more consistent use for that stretch of road.
So the veterinary's office is a permitted use in innovation, is what you're saying?
It is.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, well, are we good with this, I'm making it?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm a believer.
I'm, I'm just going to have you answer the questions next time. You did a much better job saying the exact same thing I tried to say.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
All right, we're good with that, Emily, keep moving, please.
Okay. All right, uh, we already talked a little about, a little bit about the medical marijuana, was there anything additional on that?
Doesn't appear to be.
Uh, and then I believe these all kind of get into the, uh, the Huber overlay. I don't know, Mr. Shook, if you want to address that, but, um-
Did, did we, did we actually go forward with the overlay district, or did, did we kind of replace that with the, the design regulations? I, I wasn't sure where we, we landed on that. I, I know originally there was language for an overlay district, but then, then there was talk of, of some common regulations for all residential, which might be able to resolve those concerns without having another district per se.
Yes, I guess, um, my understanding was the last we kind of decided on was to, to essentially create this as another design review district, so to require a certificate of appropriateness within that district. Any new, um, new development, any significant, um, renovation or addition, that would then trigger going to, uh, planning commission.
Yeah, and if we can scroll down, I can kind of go through it a little bit, I think it's one page down, or two pages down. So this does create a Huber, Huber overlay district. I think originally we had created, the way it looked, it was going to be a separate zoning district. This creates a sub-district within Suburban Residential. And again, this is not, this is not our landing spot, this is again for discussion here for a planning commission tonight. Recognizing some of the unique characteristics of that particular neighborhood, uh, from a design perspective and from a height perspective, uh, mainly to try and, to continue to promote that character consistency with those buildings, and specifically to avoid situations like we see on Retton Road.
Can you scroll down a little bit more, um, Ms. Wheeler? Uh, I think we looked at this before, I, uh, like the percentages, uh, the math involved in that is concerned, and then the building heights. There are existing, and, and I'm just kind of reading through, there are existing two-story homes in Huber. I want to make sure that we're not prohibiting someone from being able to do that, because I think ranch-style home next to a regular two-story home with the appropriate height restrictions appropriate. But two-and-a-half is kind of where things started getting, uh, challenging at the Retton Road area.
So it, it does say no new building addition and improvement, et cetera. It should exceed twenty-four feet in height, um, to me, that would capture a, a two-story building. But, yeah, and you, you may just, you, you probably look at a lot more home types than myself, but to me, that seems like that would be within that height range.
I think subsection D two might generate a bit more conversation. That's a section I put in there for conversation, it's not meant to be a final draft, but it does state, and this deals with, again, that building height transition conversation that you all were having earlier, uh, moving from one building to the next building to the next building. And this is language that is very similar to what was previously in the building height transition language from the prior section. And so this is probably more of an area for you guys to have a conversation.
On, okay, sorry, on that, do we, going back to your earlier discussion, in theory, you could have, uh, you could have a stair step, you could have this, and then this, and then they're going to exceed it by this. You could have a, you could have a ten-story building, at the end of the day, with this, you can't exceed the neighbor's height.
Well, no, no, it would, it would, it would, it went under this language cap, any new building or addition at twenty-four feet. With subsection D two, it would limit your ability to build a building within forty feet of another building that exceeded the height of that building to a- that exceeded the height of that building to a certain percentage. But in no case would you be able to go above 24 feet.
Okay.
Mr. Shook, I, I noticed here that the, the limit is 120%, and in RM it was 150. What, was there any particular rationale for those numbers, or was it just?
None whatsoever, just a talking point.
Sweet. At, at least to, in my way of, of thinking, if 150% seems to make sense in residential medium, I would think 150% would make sense here too, but that's just in my mind.
Keep it e, consistent?
Yeah, and also just the, the typo, and then in the parentheses, the 20%, it should be 120 or 150, not 20.
I think that makes sense, because you still have the 24-foot cap either way.
Right, and just to be clear.
Yeah, so if it's 120.
Where are they measuring on a building? Like, is it at the front door, finished grade level up to the highest point, peak of the gable, or?
That's typically what.
Lightning rod, I mean. I think their zoning code has how we measure these in there.
It does.
And just to backcheck to make sure that existing homes that we think fit within the character of that area do not exceed the 24 feet. I'm just, you know, on a two-story house with a gable out on the front of it, you know, if it's 10-foot ceilings on the first floor, most of those in Huber are not. But if it's 10-foot ceilings, another 12 or 16, I mean, you're the builder, Pat, another 12, 16 inches in between floor space, another eight to 10, and then, so I just want to make, it, it sounds close, and so we could just double-check to make sure that that works with 24. If it needs to be 25, 26, certainly don't want to prohibit somebody, or have somebody put some stumpy roof on the top of the house that is outside the character of what looked good for the house, just to conform with our code regulation.
Especially if it's, if it's just a matter of a foot or two.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
I think we just need to double-check that. If staff could double-check that when, like, when we untable this next time.
This is what we have currently.
Okay, so it's not up to the peak of the roof, it's up to the mid-low. So that makes 24 feet seem a lot more reasonable, the way that that picture shows for a two-story house, to make sure we're not missing it by a foot.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Keep going, Emily.
I think that might be everything, actually.
So there, there was, I, I don't know if it got circulated to everyone, I think there were some design guidelines for residential zones. I think the intent was a place that may be in common regulations. Can we make sure that everybody gets a copy of those? Because I'm sure that will generate significant discussion.
Okay, that's this package, and we have another meeting on the 22nd or something like that. Is that, then we're going to, that's where we're going to clean up, look at this, these changes, and then, okay, just make sure we're on the same page. Is that it then? Any other?
Mr. Itur, where does it go from there, from the 22nd? Because how many reads will it, it already had a first read, is that correct?
Correct. So the process going forward is that council will have a second read on July 12th. Planning Commission will conduct your public hearing and make your recommendations to council at your special meeting on July 22nd. Then council will have their third read and public hearing and vote on July 26th.
So what we've learned tonight, once, when we meet for the special session, we have to be, we have to complete it.
Correct.
We have to come to complete agreement.
Correct, and if, if there's any commissioner who has any thoughts or suggestions between now and then, reach out to staff.
Can you, can I, when you're communicating with us, speaking for myself maybe, I don't, I don't have time or the wherewithal to print out binds of papers, so can we, give us some information so we can find what we're looking for instead of reading 40 pages? Like, how, the changes are in the pack or something like that?
Yeah, so I will get an updated summary.
Citations.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's on the, it was, no?
No.
No, it wasn't in the packet, because the packet was just the minutes.
Packet was just the agenda.
The agenda and the minutes.
So I will do an updated summary of all the zoning changes, and we'll get that to you, along with all of the, we'll make sure every, this packet's all complete. I think this is just to give, make sure council had something to look at on the day of this week, but, yeah, we'll get that to you.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
I will not be available for the July 22nd meeting, Mr. Chairman. I hope that I have an excuse, absence.
Get comments to?
I'll communicate with staff.
I, I also will not be here, so if either one of you is out, then there's no quorum, so try not to get sick.
All right, we're done. Thank you, guys. Have a good, safe fourth.